Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Jackie. Okay, see ya. Bye bye. Hi, J.C., how are you?
Now I can't hear.
I'm good. Can you hear me?
Now I can. Yes, perfect. Good. I think we have all of our issues solved. Sorry, I wasn't able to get going, but we're up and ready now, and I believe everybody's here. I did have that on, but that's okay. We can see her.
All right. Well, we will call the meeting to order 5:05. Do I do roll call, or does the secretary do roll call?
Secretary can.
Okay.
Cole, they have two.
Pete Johnson.
You're.
Steve Saylor.
Present.
Lindsay. And J.C.'s joining us by Zoom. We're doing roll call.
All right. So I mark the guys down as.
Staff.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move second.
Mike moves, Steve seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? All right.
She got a thumbs up over here.
All right. Motion carries. The consent agenda, the only thing on the consent agenda was the minutes from the last meeting. Does anybody have any questions or additions? Everything is in your packet if you're needing to reference it at all. Look to approve the consent agenda. Emily moves to approve the consent agenda. Cole seconds it. All in favor? Opposed?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. All right. Public comments. Diane, are you here to do public comments, or are you here as a staff member?
Do you want me to?
You're just here as a staff member.
Okay. I didn't want, you know, you're a member of the public as well.
Yes, we didn't want to make any assumptions.
We're doing awesome things here.
All right. Well, we will move on to old business. The first thing is the Indianola Wellness Campus Board of Trustees Rules, Guidelines, and Regulations. And in your packet, it has lots of red lines as far as things that, you know, were the obvious things that needed to be changed because we were looking at it through the planning and zoning lens, and so we needed to switch it over to the IWC lens. So obviously, there might be more changes than that, but that's what the red lines that you see so far, that was just me going through, and then I believe Andrea went through and did the same.
There was a few of us that went through it.
Okay. So Heather and I were talking earlier tonight, you know, this is obviously a new entity for all of us, so we're not really sure exactly, you know, how involved we want the council to be. We want to make sure that we go through them as much as we can for their involvement and their, you know, approval. So we need to check with them to see what it is, you know, they need from us. So obviously, we're not ready to adopt it or approve it tonight anyway, but between now and our next study session, we will figure that out so that we can not tie things up any further.
Angie, do you care if I add to that a little bit? So last night, I went to the city council meeting, study session, and updated council on the wellness campus. To what Angie just said, they don't know what a wellness campus needs. Some of them have not been in here, and so it's going to be really important that we educate them just on the very basic and keep them involved in the things that you're working on. So I do have a couple, I have actually three big meetings tomorrow to get some clarity on some more things, because a big part of Phase Two is reviewing those policies, reviewing processes, figuring out how we work with our peers, how we work in the city, how we work with our board. Anyway, so there's probably going to be, as we're going through this process, some, we look at it here, I get information, I may need to just update you guys by email or whatever, maybe sometimes between meetings. We are already moving through quite a few of the items on our list for Phase Two, so by any means, don't feel pressured or pushed. We can always step back and get questions. We want to make decisions, and I want you guys to have all the information that you need, but I also want council to have all the information that they're needing as well.
Yeah, I agree. We just need to, you know, it's this new partnership that we're creating, and we want it to go well, so Mike did you?
Okay, Angie, I'm going to give you at least one more to scratch. If you go to section five, very last sentence on that page, it says suggestions, policy, zoning ordinance revision. I think that needs to be struck.
Yep.
And then, I'm going to go to our former FFA person for this clarification. I don't have any problems with this next item because I've done it both ways, but if you look at section seven, under new business, top about on page three or four. And Lindsay, here's what I often wondered about. Like I said, I conducted meetings both ways. Under new business, it says at this point, the Indianola Wellness Campus Board of Trustees is considered new business. Each item listed on the agenda is addressed separately. Okay, I get that, and I'm agreeing with everything on three through six being struck. But then on item seven, it says after all questions are answered, the chairperson will ask for a motion. Once the motion's been stated, the chairperson will ask for a second motion. After that motion, after the motion has been made, seconded, the chairperson restates the motion for the record. Now, in some other meetings have been on, you don't have any discussion until someone makes a motion and seconded, because if nobody makes the motion, and if nobody seconds it, then why are you going to discuss it? But now, if this is boilerplate from the city, we can function very well with that. I just, how was it when you FFA were member, from your?
Motion was first.
Motion.
Motion and second is an invention.
This is just getting, that's.
It's so much cleaner that way.
I think the reason why it's like this is because it's about the planning and zoning, so I think they're showing each item that they're approving for the planning and zoning. So I think we can make it how, I don't think it's that we have to stick with.
Okay, good to know.
I think it was just because they need to, their meetings are very different than our meeting.
Then I would suggest if we've got the FFA's approval, that we not bring anything for discussion until you have a motion moved and seconded, then you can have the discussion, and then after discussion, you vote, so.
So really, all we need to do is, under number seven, after all questions are answered, we just need to remove that, and because then the chairperson's going to ask for a motion. If they don't get a motion.
A motion to approve, yeah.
There's nothing to discuss, right?
That would be my suggestion. However, you want to get it in there, that the motion to approve is ahead of the second, and the second is ahead of the discussion.
Right.
J.C., do you have anything to add? I see you're nodding. She's, yes, in agreement. Okay.
Okay, now, the other thing, Angie, on this, and I like what we've done here with striking this, but I, again, this is just me speaking. I'm ready to get the red out of it and then be able to read through it, because I'm sure I've missed something, just because it gets.
I think since you weren't at the last meeting, Mike, we, this is what we discussed, and we decided that this would be the best way to move forward.
It's the way to go with it, but I think I'm ready now.
Right, right. And keep in mind, we were supposed to have a study session in between, so the study session was going to be this, and then so.
I've been critical.
No, we're just trying to. Yep, I am too, but I didn't want to jump the gun and just do that without you guys seeing that too.
So we'll get a clean version of it, and then we can talk about it or approve it next time.
Yes. And that's what we need direction on from the city as far as, do we approve it and then send it to council? You know, that's what we're going to shore it out.
Did anybody have anything else?
How does that work on other trustees? Like IMU would be a trustee situation, if anyone had.
I think the clarification I'm wanting is because we're a totally new entity, you know, like what other new entity has just been created, you know, so I want to make.
Well, IMU is a separate entity. They only share, we just share human resources. Otherwise, they're separate, and the library has a different structure. The library, Michelle, the director, actually reports to her board, where I report to the city manager.
So would we be more like IMU than the library?
No.
We'd never, we're not like anything.
No. No.
So that's why we're trying to feel this out.
Yeah, no.
Moves forward.
There'll be a lot of you wondering, do you have a lot of unique processes with us?
There is, very much so.
We can borrow from different groups.
So are there some unique bits that you, Heather, as?
Everything that we've done.
I know, but.
Literally, everything.
Is there something at this point where we're starting to solidify things? Is there something that you think that's not here that needs to be here?
On the, on how you guys, no, I don't, I don't have any concerns with the rules and regulations from the trustee standpoint, and I think that it may be a little bit, as Angie and I were talking before the meeting, some of these things may end up being a little bit fluid as we get our bearings, but I don't have any concerns on how we work.
So was there any of the trustees that saw anything in here that just think, put that in?
Yeah, I'm going to base my.
Yeah, that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
How detailed do you want my notes to be?
Like, I need to say, like, Cole said this.
No. No.
I can summarize?
It was, yes.
I'm not, I'm not like, or were they like?
Yes, no, no. Very brief.
I would say the only details is when somebody makes a motion specific. That's where we need the.
Yes.
Right, 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 okay.
Yeah, and you can just list out, like, topics discussed and just briefly. Yep.
Cole, did you have?
Yeah, in regards to what you're saying, point seven, so just that we're going to change up motion every time you want to discuss a new item. When maybe discuss the item, do we need anything to clarify when that discussion is over? Do we need any sort of motion to signify we're done with this discussion, now we're coming on, or can that just be, okay? Anything else, and then someone says, oh, well, I also want to discuss this, new motion, and you see if we bring that up? So we only have something on the front end of it right now. Motion to discuss, nothing to discuss. We have nothing to say if we don't go back to discussion. Do we need something?
I think eight says, because it says in the discussion presented, then the chairperson calls for a vote by roll call. Are you saying describe the motion once more after the discussion, because that would make sense if you had a robust discussion.
Okay, so we do seven and eight, or if we do seven and eight, we back to seven and eight?
Nicole, way I've experienced that before, if anyone jumped in or anybody else fell on board, somebody just says, I call the question, after the debate goes on and on and on and on.
You can, you can, I mean, somebody can do that, but typically, when you find that the conversation is done, a chairperson would say, are we ready to make a motion?
Yep.
Or something like that, but.
Well, I'm ready to call the question.
Yeah.
We're ready to discuss, the motion has already been made.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes.
Does that answer your question, Cole?
I mean, I do wonder if we need something calling after that, and it has repeating. If we might move on to new discussion items immediately after eight?
Well, then it goes back to the next agenda item.
Okay, now, I don't see this as limiting it to one thing.
Yeah. I would prefer it to be a little big than.
Get too finite?
Yeah, and then not get one motion and have it not be, you know, that's my own personal opinion. I feel like we're going to end all discussion before we vote on something. I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to voice their opinion and share, because that's why we're all here.
What if you do, you remove after all questions are answered, so it starts with the chairperson will ask for a motion. If the motion has been stated, the chairperson asks for a second to the motion. After the motion has been made and seconded, the chairperson restates the motion for the record. You need that last thing added later. Then you can add in a new, from a numeral up between those, that says the discussion, like, the board will discuss as necessary, and then add, if no amendments are proposed, to get a discussion accepted, the chairperson calls for a vote by roll call. I know, according to the secretary, it's his name, does a roll call, and then April turns to the next one. Because that gets Cole's point of, like, where is the discussion? We go from the motion to discussion ended, and you don't actually have a discussion.
So eight has the discussion.
Yeah, yeah. And all of the great, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know what question we're starting by, Angie.
Did anybody else have anything as they were reading through it?
J.C.'s good.
Well, for the next study session, we will clean this up and provide a clean copy, not the red line copy, so that you can see it kind of ready for action. And we will find out what it is we need to do, if we need to adopt it, if we need to send it to council for their, you know, we will figure that all out. Okay? Thank you for taking the time to look through that in advance. Did you have anything you wanted to add to? All right, the next thing is the Indianola Wellness Campus Facility Policies. This has been adapted from the YMCA's policies that were in place, you know, for the last 10 years. With some, on your copy, you can see some yellow highlights. Those are the changes that, kind of like the red line, but they're yellow this time, that have been made so that they make more sense to the staff and staff leadership. I do have a couple of questions, but I want to see what other people have as far as questions or concerns or.
We talked about it a little last time, but the use of the facilities by children, first, the use of the wellness center by children is a little confusing. And even the use of the wellness center, seven and under are allowed. Forty and older may use the wellness center. What if you're eight to 13? You'd use it as an adult, maybe?
I feel like the use of wellness center needs to be defined in general, because I think most people called this whole place the wellness center, and.
We talked about that at our very first meeting. We got somehow definitively what's.
Right. Right.
So for incoming members, they need to, need to know, right?
Right.
Otherwise, you're going to get a lot of PO'd people, who will, this is the center.
I don't want to stifle anybody else's comments, but I do want to bring light to the items, use of facilities by children, to the free weight equipment. I would like to table the discussion on those four items, because that is a very confusing thing, I'd say, not only for members, but for staff. We have had a leadership team discussion on that, and so if we could add that to the study session discussion next time, I would like to have the team here that can really answer to the people that are on the wellness floor that have the ins and outs as far as, that's their area of expertise.
What was the concern, Heather? I have no.
There's just a lot of confusion in all the different ages that are being named, and on top of that, the verbiage wellness center, the whole upper level in our lingo is wellness center upstairs, but it's become very clear since now we are the wellness campus that that has gotten even more confusing than it was before. And so if we're going to spell it out in a policy, I think we need to make it clear, so, yeah.
So do you have a model that you're going to bring to this?
The, yeah, the team definitely has a recommendation to bring forward.
I think that that makes sense to me, because I feel like we could clean up kind of the age, you know, who's an adult, a 16-year-old if you're in the swimming pool, and a 21-year-old if you're, you know.
Just make it easier.
Are there other policies you wish you had in here too?
There, there are some things that when we, when I, I have put together a paper for just like studies, study session discussions coming up, and I would say there's probably about maybe four or more things that we could add on here.
I would be happy to help redo this, since I do this sort of thing regularly.
Oh, sweet. Okay, thank you.
I got one of these, and I did not read it, because I guess I'm a lawyer, but also, like, it's really confusing. I think you need to, like, bucket things out, like, these are a membership.
Oh, that'd be wonderful. Yes.
Facility considerations to make it a little bit more usable.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
But I need to know what else you wanted, and so you're putting that in the next.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds perfect.
Well, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
I think that will be helpful to have staff input, because they're ultimately the ones who are having to reinforce these policies, so.
Yeah, they're going to be the hammers.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and they know what the trigger points are.
Yeah, why, why some of these are in here, and.
Right, and why three things keep coming up over and over again.
And you want it to be clear, right?
Yes.
That way, everyone knows what the expectation is.
Exactly. Yeah.
You know, I agree with Emily. This seemed really crowded to me.
Yeah.
I'm always a big fan of one-pageers, which sometimes, even on more pages, to be, add that clarity.
Well, and anymore, most of the things aren't just on a piece of, you know, they're on a website, you know, electronically, so I don't think we need to limit ourselves to what fits physically on the page.
When you're exploring code of conduct, do we need, do we need to say, there's our ramifications for not doing this? You know, it says, oh, you're supposed to be a good boy when you're in here, but if you continually do this, then that could be forfeiture. I mean, is that, I mean, I need to look more definitive about the AU's that come in here and think, they can make it, because it's a city.
Right, so part two on one of those four things also is member discipline, and so.
That's fine.
Yeah.
And I think that goes hand in hand with the code of conduct on the next page.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's not on there. In fact, it's a separate document, but yeah, if we could bring that just for maybe first review in the next study session, just to look at it, kind of start.
How soon does the next Indianola magazine go out?
At the last department head meeting, it normally goes out quarterly. I know that Doug was talking about the expense of it and was concerned from a budget standpoint, how much it is, so I think they're looking at, looking at different options. There was discussion about it going out three times a year instead of four, and/or offering it online. During COVID, they sent out postcards telling.
We had a significant base in that, this issue, which is fine. Now, we gotta, we gotta think we're going to have to define what some of this stuff is with our next one.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
I know it's expensive, but.
Right, right. Thank you. Yes.
See, Emily.
Will be a thing.
But I think, you know, it friends you a lot in a little time, and that's, I think, most people look at that American magazine something. Just a thought. I know it's expensive, but jeez, I mean, for the city to take this on is a big expense.
Yeah, and Parks and Rec does have all of theirs listed in there.
I know.
Yeah, so it would make sense.
It kind of bugs me to say, well, we don't want to spend a lot of cash on it. This is going to be important to the city.
No decisions have been made. That was just a discussion topic, so when you ask how many times it may change. Yeah.
I don't know how much you consider it too expensive, when you're promoting city and city projects and city. I think that's a great magazine, and I was going to bring that up under comments, that I would really appreciate the content that you had in there. We've got a lot to present by the first of the year, right?
Honestly, that's a Parks and Rec product. I do have a meeting with Doug tomorrow, so I can mention, I can mention the comments and just talk through it with him a little bit more and update you.
One of us sits on the board.
Who does?
Well, we haven't decided that.
Oh, yeah. I say, I don't know, anybody does.
We could rotate around.
Yeah.
I can see somebody else will ask.
That's funny.
So we will table the facility policy till the next meeting, or the next study session, when we can have staff present and we can get some more definitions and things.
Was there any other area? I know I'm specifically looking at those four items, but is there anything else that stands out, or anybody has any specific questions regarding?
Are we in the headroom leaving? No number assigned at the full offer, we told you.
Our current fee is $4.16. We would like to get rid of the change on that and either make it an even five or, you know, a certain, whatever. It's been $4.16 since we opened, and we, yeah, we, I don't know if we have to charge, I suppose we have charge tax on that too. We have charge tax on everything but swimming lessons, so, yes. Anyway, so yeah, that amount, that amount can be determined.
Four, four eighty-five, the tax, five bucks.
Something like that.
Whatever, what are you going to, six percent tax?
Seven.
Seven, yeah, seven percent.
Whatever.
But it would be nice if it was like an even number from the cash drawer standpoint.
Here is just a question. Look down there in the schedule to get to the website. Is there any talk about just having a website for the wellness center rather than running through the city, or is that a have to?
There is no talk about that right now. I don't know if that would be a future discussion, but right now, it definitely serves well for it to be a landing page on the city's website.
Yeah.
Yeah. The city takes care of it. Andrea has access. She's our point of contact here, but they just hired a communications manager for the city, and he's incredible. We had a meeting with him, so he may even, he's been actually, he mentioned a couple of times now, he's looking at the website. He doesn't love the flow of the website. He thinks things need to be different, so that may just kind of come organically through him.
Would you say, if being at his wellness center dot Iowa, Indianola? Well, the reason why I ask is because I, I need to find the phone number here, because I need to call somebody, and. You're not going to look at Indianola. Well, you look at the wellness center and.
Sure.
Yeah.
Send you to Mississippi.
Yeah, right, so I convinced we got the phone number, said, how do you get to the website?
Yes, yeah.
Go to the city and.
Right. I see some of those things, that's a great example of something that would probably be more like a Phase Three thing. So Phase Two is getting through those policies, rules, regulations. Aaron's already helped make some changes. There are, there are still some kinks on the website.
If you say Indianola Wellness Center rather than Indianola Wellness Campus.
When you type in Indianola Wellness Campus, it does pop up right away with the phone number.
But in order.
If you say center, it does.
Right.
Oh, okay.
But I, but I'm going to redirect, if I may, because Phase Two, it's very important, we stick with rules, regulations, policies. That's a Phase Three, or maybe even later, or maybe even not for our decision, because we have a communications manager.
Maybe if I knew what I was doing, it would be just fine.
Or five. Yeah. All right, Heather.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes. So I don't know if this fits now, but Missy Grip of Grip Fitness approached me when she found out that I was on this board. And I would imagine that she spoke to you, and I'm looking at the personal training rule, but she was wondering if the rule would, about outside fitness classes would be reconsidered now that this organization is now under the city. She, she wondered if there was room and. She, she wondered if there was room and time to rent the home classes here.
I met with, yes, I met with Missy and, um, we, that would definitely not be something that's under a rules, regulation and policy right now. I know that it, personal training is on here, but we currently have personal trainers on staff. So if we were going to make a change like that, we would, that, that is a bigger conversation. And because we have so many things that we need to work through that are a high priority as far as membership, membership policies, um, sustainability to make sure that, um, we get our membership types even straightened up a little bit. That is something that's probably going to be more of phase three.
Okay. I have no skin in the game, just passing on her questions.
Yeah, yep. It's on the list. There's, there's actually quite a few things on, on the list for phase three. It's a growing list. Thank you.
Did anybody have anything else? Any comments? So we will just table this until the next, uh, study session. Um, the next page is the Indianola Wellness Campus Member Code of Conduct. It kind of goes hand in hand with the page we just were on. Does anybody have anything they would, again, I would like to bring this back to the study session. I don't think that we're ready to.
That's fine. Yeah, have a deeper discussion.
Yes. But did anybody have any glaring things that they would like to point out or add to the.
J C's good.
Okay. Did J C have any, I wasn't.
She's, yeah, she was, she said she's good.
Okay. Um, so then the next thing is the Indianola Area Swim Club Bylaws. Caitlin was here at the last meeting and presented this. It looks to me like the changes that we talked about have been implemented.
Yes.
Mainly being, um, we've changed it from parent booster club to just booster club. So.
Yeah, that was a good change.
What do, what do we need for this? Do we just need an approval?
I think we just need an approval. Okay.
Personal membership, three point one.
Did you say three point one?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Swimmers of ages six through nineteen, um, can be on there. Um, there's nothing in this record as far as I see that would prohibit a freshman at Simpson from being on this team. Are we okay with that? Or, or, you know, just saying someone of that age who's graduated from high school? So do we want to intentionally make this to people who are in high school age or something?
Well, in, a good question. We just received notification that we're approved for USA Swim. That application was, was approved. What, would that impact this? I'm asking you because I know you know that world more than I do.
I actually never was on a club. So I only did high school.
Okay, yeah. Caitlin said she would.
I swam after my freshman year on our local, just to fill in for relays, just because I was still young enough to.
Yeah, I know.
And Caitlin is, is planning on coming to the next study session. So if you'd like that, we can bring that up.
In my opinion, if she and Erin are okay with having nineteen-year-olds that are graduating from high school, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
But I think it's worth recognizing that this currently allows that this record does.
Yes, okay.
Wouldn't it, uh.
That's a good question.
Are there nineteen-year-olds swimming against twelve-year-olds? Is that?
Well, it's all age regulated. So it goes by your birth date.
So I'm wondering if you're swimming the fifty-yard freestyle.
You're not swimming against a twelve-year-old.
You're not swimming? That's what I was wondering.
No.
I didn't, I, I've never been to the USA swimming. I've been to high school and been to the Hawaii stuff, but I've never been to one that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Diane.
Yeah.
I'm trying to look up what's a swim category.
Well, it's all the categories, which I certainly do. I guess one of those things.
And if you want to just hold this over and then, but I'm glad you've mentioned that. So we'll definitely, let's look at that again.
You know, I said Simpson students kind of vice, some of them might, but I really, I, I'm just talking to people who are graduated from high school.
Sure. I follow you. Okay.
I guess I look at it like Little League, you know.
Under the Marlins, we definitely did have somebody, uh, because Chelsea Burchett swam after she graduated. I'm pretty sure she, she swam on that, the Marlins or the Tide or whatever. Yeah.
It's just like any sport, you know, soccer, if you still meet the age requirement and still want to do it.
Yeah.
I don't know if our.
Which is not all bad either. I mean.
Right.
Yeah, if the coaches are okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Yeah, just if they should be aware that they're saying they're okay with this.
Yes, let's check.
Throw out an interesting question out there. Can special memberships? So let me say, say you were to have a class or special, I mean, you could have any.
True.
That'd be right.
This is specifically talking in regards to the swim team though, not yourself.
Well, I mean, if your team were to take on a special, I mean, you could have forty to fifty girls.
Yeah.
Way out in the future.
Yeah.
I doubt it. We could probably amend it if we take that along. So depending on how we promote it.
Yeah.
Somebody said something, just made me think that I can't remember what it was and say.
It looks like this purpose has changed from parent booster club to booster club. Is that a good discussion from last night?
Right.
I agree.
And that's a great change. Oh, I know. I was gonna say, I have a meeting with the coaches scheduled for, it's next Tuesday or Thursday. So I'll bring that up with them.
That was the only thing that we indicated last time.
Yeah. Yes, yep.
Did anybody see anything else?
Do they have to be members of the Indianola Wellness Campus to be a member of this one team?
They do.
Does it say that in there anywhere?
Uh, I don't know if it says it in the bylaws.
I just wasn't sure.
I don't know if it needs to. That's something I would need to find out because maybe it does need to.
Because when I read the membership, all I read is being a member of the Indianola Area Swim Club. I don't read anything about.
Payment or anything, yeah.
This facility. It makes it sound like you can be a member of this one club without being a member of Indianola Wellness Campus. So I didn't know if that had changed.
I'll check.
Was the why?
Well, I don't know if it needs to be in the bylaws or not. That's what I need to find out if it needs to be in the bylaws or not. But I'm glad you brought it up. So let's find out.
I have no other comments.
Anybody else? Well, we will gather information on those two points and, uh, present back at the study session.
And are both, those, both of those are, they're both in three point one, right? Is there any other reference to the ages? Just in that one? Okay. Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay. Good.
Thank you. All right. The next thing is the Executive Director Dashboard. And this is something that was discussed at the last meeting as a way for Heather, as the Executive Director, to communicate with us, kind of to give us a snapshot of where we're at. And so I thought it would be worthy of a discussion of what it is that we would like to include on that dashboard. You know, we're all kind of coming at it from different angles and perspectives. And some of you have more finance backgrounds, some of you have more membership backgrounds, some of you care what's happening, you know, where the staff is. So, um, I just thought that it would be good to kind of go through that, figure out what it is we would like to, to hear from, you know, and I want your input as well as far as what
Sure.
you think would be most beneficial for us to have. We
Sure.
easily could get in the weeds on a lot of things and I don't want this dashboard to do that. I want this to just be a very quick comparison, like this is where we are.
Yeah, that's would be my question.
Oh, it's what we discussed. Sorry, you guys weren't. We discussed it the last meeting too, at the beginning of every Board of Trustees meeting for the Executive Director to give us a, a one-page or something snapshot of where we were. It's just a communication tool basically, so that we're all on the same page. We can easily see, oh, our membership has grown this much. Um, our, you know, staff, we have these staffing needs, you know, those types of things. So I'm asking what we want to include on that dashboard as far as what would be beneficial without getting in the weeds as far as, you know, we, we want you to do your job and we want you to feel supported by us, not that we're.
Sure, I understand.
Obviously, membership is, is a key component of this whole thing. Maybe going's on what's what's, what's happened since the last one in the way of maybe promotions or issues, pools blown in the league or, you know, something like that, just.
Yep.
That kind of stuff.
In, in G I, you know, you folks weren't part of the Y's report, but to me, I just would like to have something from the financials. And I don't know whether it's a month over month or a year to date or, um, but I, I think I would prefer knowing if we're running in the red on a monthly basis. I want to know that. And.
A comparison maybe to.
Yeah.
So we have, you know, as you say, we expect January to be good, June not so good. So just a brief comparison as to why it might be this way.
Yeah. I don't know that we need it as extensive as we receive through the Y, but you know, it was income or revenue and expenses, you know, that X number of dollars in revenue, X number of dollars in expenses. And then maybe to Steve's point here, we have, uh, major outlay at the pool level that's identified. So we know that, you know, maybe that's happening this month, but it's not going to happen over the next six months because we just repaired it. So something related to the finances on a regular basis.
Okay.
I always think it's fun to hear like, you know, one thing to celebrate and then one thing that still needs improvement. So like what went well this month, something that really tops the charts, that went really well, and then something that still needs attention or is a struggle, like a, you know, I mean, that gives a pretty good.
Sure.
Snapshot.
Well, and something in terms of maybe your programming, um, not that there's X number of people in A O A, but you know, we have an A O A class and next month we're gonna do something else for state insurance or something else for the learn and play.
Right.
Those swim facilities, just highlights.
Yep, okay.
I've got six points that I must get down. The first three were finances, membership and classes, programming. The next, they are any events that we have.
Yep.
Any external collaborations, things like working with other swim teams or anything like that, to have any changes in equipment that we have or the significant changes in facility, like we need this, we need this. This one's really running down or we just bought this for a lot of problems up against things, et cetera.
Okay.
And with the classes, the programming, I, I think it'd be really, I think it'd be helpful to know the attendance of those classes as well.
Sure. Um, did anybody by chance jump on the study session last night? Basically, I think what you guys are asking for is basically everything that I had covered the study session that I felt like that I get questions about that they'd want to know. Um, so I, I agree with all of that. And yes, we are, we do keep track of attendance for all classes. We keep track of when we're adding classes. We keep track of obviously on a, ongoing calendar, our events. Um, as far as year over year, everything's going to be completely different. Um, so we may need to do a building.
Down the road.
I, I mean, I'm watching all the membership reports. I have, I still have all the membership data from when we opened. Um, even when I was preparing to give an update for the business breakfast, um, last week, um, for the people of Bank Business Breakfast, and then for the study session for council, I updated again and I was looking back and kind of reflecting and there are so many things that are irrelevant. Since probably twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, or twenty-twenty-one, I am looking at twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, and then obviously this year. But then moving forward because of the different structure, that, all the differences in, in the acquisition, some of those datas that we will have will be irrelevant. So. Um, but I will update you just kind of quickly since you've asked about some of the things. Um, I did let the council know, um, and I went in my meetings tomorrow, we do need to drain our pools. Both pools need to be drained. They need to be cleaned. Um, that needs to happen sooner rather than later. So I'm going to be, everybody's going to be hearing that.
Have they ever just re- cleaned that?
Uh, they were done in twenty nineteen. Yep, they were both, I think they were both done in twenty nineteen. If it wasn't twenty nineteen, it was, yeah, it was definitely twenty nineteen. I don't think it was twenty twenty. It was twenty nineteen. Um, that's when they were, but we are having problems with keeping the chemicals the way they should be simply because it just needs to be. I mean, everything's fine. Everything's fine. It's safe to be in there. It's just getting very costly to keep up with keeping the chemicals the way they need to be and the, um, the preventative maintenance hasn't. Yeah.
Every three years we gotta clean.
Yes. And, you know, unfortunately, Y's are known, known for not taking care of pools, equipment, but namely pools. And so we'd like to get like on a preventative maintenance schedule that they currently offer and stuff like that. So.
First thing that public schools do is deter maintenance.
Yeah, no.
We cannot get into that situation here.
And it's, it's a tough situation because we also have aging equipment. And that was the other information that I had shared with council last night is between the aging equipment and the, the pool need, the pools need attention. There are some very serious challenges as far as what we are facing. Obviously, membership is our biggest revenue, but in order to continue to draw membership and maintain membership, we have to take care of those things. So those are things that, um, that have already been shared and I'll keep sharing it until it gets done. So. Um, you know, it's really, it, it, it kind of sets itself when you're hosting three competition swim teams and the only time they're not competing is March. It's March. So there is a, yeah, no, I, yeah, true, but it's in the middle of swim season. And so we have to, right after, uh, competition swim season ends, like that late February, early March, right, right then is the window that we have to do it. And it will be down for about, it'll be down for at least four weeks. At least four weeks. Yep. You know, it's something we need to probably, Casey and I have started talking a little bit, you know, what do we feel about doing both of them at the same time? I'd like to maybe stagger it so we can still have programming going on in one, if from a bidding standpoint, that doesn't hurt us more than help us. But like I told her, it's, nothing's more frustrating than when you go on road construction and they have this huge stretch closed down for like just one tiny section. So if we could keep one of the pools open just to keep programming going, you know, our, our water classes are running anywhere from thirty to forty people regularly right now. And so that's a big membership draw. And there'll be understanding that it needs to be done and supportive, but it also, you know, that's a hard hit. So.
Back on the, the dashboard.
Yeah.
We talked about finances and membership.
Yes.
Where did we get, come on, I think those two, I think it's also.
Okay, super.
We're getting these finances from these members.
Yep.
Yeah. And then, and obviously that can get super detailed. So.
Right.
It's appropriate, but the more we can find those, the more information we could get.
And I think during, um, this phase two, phase three, as we're making the changes that we've already discussed, like removing the grandfather rates, removing the corporate discounts. I think that it probably is great information to maybe go a little bit more detailed while that stuff is going on. And then as we build time. while that stuff is going on and then as we build time and build, um, you know, we'll have something more measurable moving forward that is kind of foundational. I don't want to necessarily go, uh, membership type numbers. Um, you can get really in the weeds by that and really find like, why are there this many? That's our job, we, we take care of when we start seeing those things. But like a year over year is always a really great, once you have something more established, which we can, we can compare what we have, but, uh, you know, we're, we're essentially moving from, we're, it would be moving towards all full pay um, and not having the variety of different ones that we have. Right now, it's so hard to look at membership and go, oh, here's where it is because they all pay at a different rate, um, so.
So Heather, right now, are you feeling very comfortable where we are in terms of how it works?
Yes, yes, um, membership is, is, is looking really great, yes, yeah. And I, and I'll just bring all, I'll bring the datas to the study session that we're kind of talking about and then you guys can look at that and say, yeah, that works or no, that doesn't work.
The other thing I would suggest, because you have a long history with the previous board that we have. I think there were other things that the previous board of thirty-some people thought were important, were important. There were trustees.
Right.
Trustees with seven.
Sure.
So I.
I will, I will, I'm more on the, but I'll also be looking at your governing board where they were an advisory board, so.
Yeah.
You'll be getting different things, but I, but I also know you need information to make your decisions too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess I want to be clear too, the dashboard isn't the only information we're ever going to get.
Oh, no.
This is just like.
Like a standard.
This is just a standard, every month we can expect to see the same, or you know, obviously it's going to be fluid for a while, but so that we have some comparison.
I do too, I think those are, yeah, yeah.
It, it basically gives us a, hey, things are going well, or.
Yeah.
We need to make some changes.
Right.
No.
And in my, in my update last night, I also shared wins and challenges, priorities, tasks that we're addressing right now too. So, yeah, to that point, I agree.
Yep, yeah, I just wanted some input of what we all needed to know to work together to help support, so.
I appreciate that, it's good, I, I'm anxious to share those things with you, again, I think that'll help you make good decisions too, so.
Yeah, thank you.
And support us, so thanks.
Yes, yes. Um, so the next thing is new business, which is to schedule our upcoming study session. Does anybody have any parameters? I would like to do it in, we're going to meet obviously in another month for our regular meeting, so I would like to maybe look at it like two weeks from now in that timeframe.
I kind of penciled in on my calendar first and third.
Yeah, yeah.
I already have it on my calendar.
Okay.
People have one at five P M.
Okay, well, that's what I did.
That's on my calendar too.
It's, it's on mine too, but. But I didn't want to make this.
And J C, does that work on, for you on Tuesday, October seventeenth at five P M?
There's no school that day.
Uh, well, you're gonna love this, but it's volleyball regionals, so it depends on the schedule.
That's right, she did say that, yes. Do you want to do?
The mornings are great for me, I, I know they might not be for others, but, okay.
Morning.
Can everybody else do it in the afternoon?
I'd be either way.
Either way. Either. Has to be five for you.
Has to be five. I have five.
I have five, yeah, I mean, that's what we originally, um, J C, how is it working as far as zooming in? I mean, is it awful to pay, follow along with the meeting?
No, I, this, I'm so used to this. Fine for you, it's fine for me, I just don't want to feel.
She has a pretty good method over here, she's just doing this and I'm getting all the cues.
Okay. Well then, how about we keep it at five and if you need to zoom in, we, we make that work and, you know, without even knowing what the timeframe is for volleyball, I, you know, I would hate to.
And I can also connect with you either before or after.
All right, so the next, the study session will be Tuesday, October seventeenth at five P M.
Okay.
And that will be here in the same room. Um, trustee comments. J C, would you like to, do you have anything, I know that you're trying to get to a game, so.
So, the only thing, I put this in the chat, but I didn't know if anybody checks the chat. When we were discussing code of conduct, I didn't think of it until we were past it, but, um, is filming, like unsolicited filming of members a thing and does that need to be in a, in a code of policy or anything? Uh, maybe it's not, but you hear about that.
Um, that came up, let's, let's add it on here and let's talk through it. Obviously, we'll have to involve legal, um, I know it came up under the Y, um, and they went back and forth with it. Um, we are, well, we were required under the insurance company at the Y to hang signs outside the locker rooms saying there won't be filming. We went through, I had a walk, had a mock audit, um, with the insurance company and with I C A P yesterday. They didn't spell out anything on that, but I think that's a good point, let's, let's add it on there for at least discussion in some direction.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, J C. Anything else? I just didn't want to, I know when you're, when you get to Pella, you're gonna. So.
We're just going to take a picture of your verbiage on there, I thought your verbiage was good.
It's similar to my background with schools, I really appreciate whoever's doing the whole information. They look nice, they're informative, uh, the ones from the, the, uh, learn and play, I don't know if we're still calling it learn and play.
Yes.
I just think whoever's doing that, give them a pat on the back.
Well, thank you, we, we have marketing team meetings, it's the leadership team, we have marketing team meetings regularly and there is assignments on a deadline with a timeline and when they need to be switched. I'll, they'll be happy to hear that, I'll be happy to report that because it's on our list and they have been doing a great job of it.
Yeah, they have. The other thing, uh, I got a friendly reminder from the I R S the other day that I have X number of dollars that I need to distribute to required minimum distribution, so where are we with that?
Um, we have received donations, um, and then I did check back through to make sure that the donations that we received still are fulfilling the obligations that we said we would do, um, from the ones that we have received on the timeline. As you know, we're phasing out the financial assistance at the end of November. Um, but we are able to receive donations, we are a nonprofit and it is, um, that, like that donation just goes right now to where all the donations go until our, our designation is set up.
My question from a seventy-three-year-old guy is.
Yeah.
How does it get reported back to, um, the I R S, whoever gets that information? So, uh, I can claim that on my taxes?
That would, city finance, yeah, city finance takes care of that.
Okay.
Yep, yeah.
I'm ready to do it with my own personal company.
Oh, well, thank you, yes, no, the city finance department helps with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll get your paperwork rolling, just.
Thank you.
Get it over here.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have other things?
No.
Anybody else have, uh, comments? Okay. Um, agenda items for the next meeting, we obviously have quite a little list started with the, the study session as far as having staff come and all of the things that we discussed.
Are you accelerating the next meeting being the study session, is that what you want?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yes, and are you anticipating that being longer than an hour or, and not that I have any limitations on it, but I don't want to necessarily say we've got X number of stuff to do and we're going to get it done in an hour.
Sure.
Because, and I like hour meetings, don't get me wrong, but.
I do too, I'm anticipating it longer than an hour, it'd be my guess, just.
It looks like rules and regulations, it looks like personal conduct.
I think it.
The fee thing.
Yeah.
We gotta get that thing done.
Right.
So I, I think it will.
That's a pretty big, I was stealing from old.
Yep, I think that that will kind of set us up nicely for the next meeting to.
Get everything approved.
Right.
Yes.
You know, it's all these steps and.
We'll only put in as much time as needed to turn into this, to get things rolling, so.
Right.
Just checking.
Right. And we, we, I, I don't want anybody to feel like they're being held hostage, you know? But.
Yeah, sorry.
But, but I, we do have a lot to cover, you know?
Yeah.
And I want to make sure.
We have big decisions to make, so, the next month, so.
Right, yeah, my goal is to make sure everybody's informed so that they can make those decisions.
Yeah.
Sure.
So we've got our rules and regulations, personal conduct.
Yep.
To discount my current fees.
Yep, yes, so you're, you're teeing us up for the next thing here.
I think those three things, I, dealing with the fee thing's going to take a while, a lot of paramount discussion, I would say.
I think that's, yeah, I think it's going to be probably for information at first and sharing that, um, the communication's already gone out as far as the financial assistance ended November thirtieth, and the next one would be the corporate discounts, which would be ending at the end of December, um, which.
Like I said, we got to disseminate that to our population.
Right, right.
Longer we wake up.
Yes, exactly.
So Heather actually has some things prepared that she thought would be helpful resources for us to read through in preparation for the study session so that we kind of are on the same page going into that discussion.
If you want to just pass it, yeah, these guys, and J C, I'll make sure to get you these as well. Um, so this is just notes from going through all the list of phase one and phase two specifics. Um, just to go through this real quickly, just so you know what, uh, what I was doing here is, um, everything that has the arrows on it are things that are already in work. So, um, beginning October one, we started charging the current admin fee. Um, that is one of, on your, one of your policy sheets, we would like that to go to an even dollar amount as well. The grandfathered rates, um, we had shared during the transition, if people were able to prove that they drafted in July at a specific rate under a corporate discount, we would honor that through the end of this year. Um, that was going, that was set up through, uh, the end of September, so those grandfathered rates are no longer available. We are no longer selling any corporate discounts that were set up, um, previously the, by the Y, that, that function has been turned off um, in the, in the software. But we do have a, a handful of people that are already on those memberships. In fact, it's a total of, when we last looked, um, in August, it would have been a hundred and four memberships that have discounts um, that are totaling like three thousand dollars, which I'll give you that information. Um, Steve came and met with Diane and I and we went through, um, the report, um, so it was great to get his input, his feedback and hear some more things.
The I M U thing should probably be moved up to the city, so that.
Yeah, that was, um, that was, but when she ran that, that was before that was effective and so it is not on there now, yeah.
It dropped, that drops, then the eighty's on.
Yes, that one is no longer on there. Um, and then for sales tax implementation, our biggest issue there is just getting core, the software to get that, help us get that set up. So, um, we're in the process of getting that taken care of. Um, I already talked about the discounts, uh, sales tax, oh, that copied twice, I'm sorry about that. And then, um, policies, obviously we're working through those. And then the next items on there are the facility age restrictions, that's on the policies, but that's the thing that we really want to have a deeper discussion in. Um, general facility guidelines is another, uh, document that I will be sending out in your packet for the study session. Weather protocol, um, all I have is what we have been doing under the Y. I am going to ask, um, Ben, I'm my resources at the city for input, feedback, and try to find out exactly like who are the decision makers, what does that look like, um, in deciding? Typically, it's easy when it comes to a programming standpoint, if schools canceled, we don't have swim team in the evening, we don't have, you know, I'm saying, depending on when they've, when they've closed school, but as far as closing down the whole facility, that doesn't happen very often. But we do oftentimes with really bad weather, need to keep in mind that most of our staff are rural. Most of our group X instructors come from Norwalk, Carlisle or rural Indianola. Very, very few of our staff and instructors are right here in town. So there has been many times where we have, more recently, um, the Y never closed before and I'd say more recently, the last couple of years, where they were more reasonable in saying, okay, we're not going to have a class depending on when.
And that can be easily addressed, I don't.
Yeah, so that's kind of.
People are understanding when their classes cancel.
Right.
We just want to make sure.
We just, I just want to make sure that, right, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that the board of trustees and I understand what we are saying, what we need to do, how we work, how we show up, and then I also obviously need the city to know those things as well. Um, and that, uh, that member discipline, uh, thank you for bringing that up, Steve, that was obviously something when I was looking, I was like, oh, we need the discipline part of that too. Um, and then wanting to discuss our hold policy, um, our software does not put a stopping point on putting a membership on hold. Um, basically, somebody can put their membership on hold indefinitely, um, it skews, uh, memberships and I don't think it's best practice. So we are proposing, um, putting memberships on hold is, is an option for up to four months, otherwise they just need to cancel. And if it's a doctor's note, then great, then we can extend it for that, but that's something that we're wanting to change. On page two, um, page two, that middle section in my mind is something more later, later, uh, later in phase maybe three, membership types, tackling membership rates is not something that we really should be doing or prepared to do at this point, but we definitely want to start talking about it. There's a lot that's involved when you're discussing changing membership types, changing membership rates. So, um, we want to start that conversation and, um, be able to dive into that, um, knowing that we're not doing anything right now or anything, um, probably even in the six to twelve-month timeframe, but unless we feel like we need to. Um, and then the, uh, that's types and rates are really kind of tied together. And then agreements, um, under the Y, we had group agency agreements, um, group agency would be like Genesis brings in a group of, um, of individuals that they serve and they had an agreement with the Y. Currently, we haven't set any of those group agencies up, um, so that's a discussion that we will need to have. And then, um, eventually, we do need to revisit, um, the twenty-eighty agreement, um, the agreement with Simpson College in the, the school district. I know in conversations with Ben, um, that's something that we're really trying to wait till we get through competition swim season, get, let the dust settle, um, um, obviously, we're having regular meetings with them, keeping those lines of communication open. We have great rapport, um, and great partnerships and so we want to make sure that the timing is right when we go to revisit that. We know it needs to be revisited, but, um, I want to educate, you know, the board of trustees on what that current agreement looks like and some of the challenges that we've had, some of the things that worked, um, maybe some, uh, suggestions a, along with that, so that, that is something that we'll start talking about early and again, it's not going to be a quick conversation. Um, and then eventually get to facility rentals, that might be something that can be moved up. Um, you know, for instance, this, this is a rental space, we get asked about a lot and I, I think our rates like, if I remember right, it's like twenty-five dollars an hour or fifty dollars an hour, I can't remember exactly what it is. And then we have a different rate for the gym and, but they haven't been reviewed or changed in years. So I'd like to have that conversation. And then our building hours are, I'm not, I'm not suggesting any changes to our building hours, our building hours, we're not getting any member re. Our building hours, we're not getting any member requests or complaints. The hours seem to work well. When we're open, it's efficient for, it's efficient, it just seems efficient for staffing and for usage, unless somebody's hearing something different. We haven't heard anything. One thing that we do need to discuss, and I need to get some clarity both from trustees and from the city, and determine who are the decision makers in it. But the holidays are different under the Y and under the city, and holiday hours are different, and holiday pay is different. And there is a lot that needs to be considered when we talk about how we do that because unlike the other departments in the city, they are open from, what, you know, eight normal business hours. They're not open nights and weekends, and they are closed for the holidays. From a membership standpoint, for instance, as an example, we've always been open Thanksgiving morning, regular hours until like an, an earlier in the day timeframe, and it's a busy day. It's always been a very busy day. A lot of people come in the morning. But then we've also been open on Christmas, or on New Year's Eve Day, and we've always had very low attendance. So, you know, that's something that locally, maybe we look at that differently. So we can talk about all that. And then I highlighted New Year's Eve and Easter because those were holidays that, those were the two holidays that we were closed when we were under the Y. And then new, under city holidays, the highlighted yellow President's Day and Veterans' Day, those are new to us. Those have not been holidays that we had recognized under the Y. So, so that's that. And so, I guess, maybe think about those things. And again, I have some meetings. So before our study session, I should have some more information to share, too. Everything that we're doing is different, and everything is new. So it's new for us, and it's new for them, and it's new for you, so we're all learning together. So that's that. And then when we are talking about the financial assistance and corporate discounts, the sheet that Steve was referring to, again, this was something that Diane had prepared and went through with, and you went through with Steve and I. This is on August information. Obviously, we've finished September, so these numbers will be a little bit different. I had shared that everybody that's on financial assistance have already received notification that those discounts will be ending the end of November. Yeah, it's just one, sorry. And then Steve was 100% right, and that IMU, IMU under the corporate discounts now falls under the city, city employee and IMU employee discounts. So, and that went in effect as of, it was sometime in September. So that won't be on there. It'll be on there, but it won't be one that we're obviously removing. It's not considered a grandfathered one either. But the others, that, this just tells you, gives you a snapshot at the end of August of what those discounts were and how many units are on them and what the total dollar of impact is.
This is helpful.
It is.
Thank you, Steve, for coming in and doing that. And I think it's helpful, you know, to see, oh, it's not really thousands of people.
I was worried about being significant.
No, it's not, no. And then the other thing that I wanted you to see, because of the changes that we're making, and we know we need to send communications out to membership of the changes that are being made, I thought it would be really great for you to see what was shared, and maybe you had seen it, what was shared once. So this was published March 30th. This is what we shared with membership. These, these were available, this was printed and available to members. It was on the city's website. It was not on the Y's website, but we did share the information when we were, during the transition time. So some of this stuff has already probably been worked through, but just so you know, this is the last communication that our, our membership and community have seen. So.
We thought it would just be a good resource.
Yeah.
You didn't, you know, you might read it through a different lens, looking backwards now.
Yep. And then the final thing that I have to give you is, and this is kind of in rough draft form, but we are creating a, we have an organizational chart. Just so you know, like, when we're talking about different things, our org chart, obviously trustees and city manager are at the top, and then supported by our, our staff team.
That's helpful, just, you know, when a staff member, or, you know, if Heather says somebody's first name, and you're like, I have no idea who that is.
It was valuable, too, in case somebody from the public comes and asks us what.
Right.
Who's doing what.
Exactly. Something that we're adding to, just so you know, what we're adding to this is we're adding what, what those, you know, what are those responsibilities? Not necessarily their full job description, but what does it mean to be a Group X coordinator? So what, what is Kim's, like, you know, five bullet points of what her responsibilities are? And then we may also add, when we talk about, like, Learn and Play staff, lifeguards, roughly like an approximate number of how many employees that is. I mean, we typically have anywhere between 100 and 125 employees as a whole. Right now, there's three of us that are full-time. Everybody else is part-time under the city. And the way city is set up as far as IFRS benefited, non-benefitted, their policies are very different than the Y's. The Y's model was set up and supported very part-time staff, very, very part-time staff. When we went through the transition, most of our staff, like, when I say most, a good, at the time of 122, there was more like 110 that work less than 10 hours a week. Moving forward, that's not something that we really, really wanna continue. In some areas, it's necessary. Obviously, Group X instructors can't teach 40 hours worth of classes. That's not good for their bodies. And Learn and Play isn't open that many hours, but maybe that's something that we decide we do something different. Maybe it's open more, maybe it's open less. I don't know. Anyway, but I think it's helpful for decision-making, also for you to know how many people were talking and maybe like average hours that they work. So we'll be adding some of that information that I think might be useful, or stuff that I'm looking at anyway, that I think you should probably see as well. If you think of anything else that you'd like to, I'll be looking at my things, thinking, okay, what might be helpful? What are things that are needing reviewed? But feel free to let me know anytime if there's other information that you'd like to see or, or know.
And the point isn't to overwhelm.
No, I'm sorry if I am. I just thought.
No, I, it's really to, you know, make sure that you're coming at this with all the information you can have. Thank you, Heather, for putting all that together.
Thank you. J.C., I'll get you that stuff.
Did anybody think of anything as we were going through that as far as items you'd like to see on the agenda for? Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mike? All those in favor?
Oh, she said yes. Thank you.
Good luck tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for accommodating me. I appreciate it. Worked out great. No issue. Thank you. Thanks so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, everyone.